Five after five, I'll call this legislative committee meeting to order.
Citizens, here's some extra copies of the full packet, not just agenda if y'all need them.
Wednesday, December fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Roll call please.
Mr. Sires.
Here.
Mr. Barber. Mr. Farmer.
Here.
And I will also introduce you have Dr. Miller, Mr. Warren, and Mr. Davis.
Do we have any revisions or additions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, do we need to vote on that?
I make a recommendation we could do.
Second.
I'll be.
Just two of us here. All right, and then can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
All right, I file a new business, discussion of potential revisions to PCC Chapter Two, Animal Shelter File.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Mr. James McLaughlin, who's in charge of our animal shelter, he's gonna walk you through some suggested revisions he has to Chapter Two of our Fitzsimian County Code that deals with animals. If you, in the packet, if you turn to five A, this is what he'll be working off of, and any of these suggested changes will be indicated throughout this in red ink. And a line out means that that's being removed, and an underlined red ink means that that's being proposed to be added in his new language. So I turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin, appreciate him coming here today.
And, uh, and just to generally summarize, majority of these are just updating to current Virginia code. Um, a lot of the time, time periods for holds and things like that have changed since these were originally passed. So, moving through the packet, the first item, Section Two Tech Six, amount of license tags. This was something that actually was approved back in June and has not gone into effect yet, and we're, uh, working out a plan, uh, we need to work with Mr. Schorter to figure out the best way to do this. But the intent was for unspayed, unneutered animals that, um, the owner would pay a additional five dollars for a code where allowed to charge up to ten dollars for unaltered animals, um, ten being the max. And the norm had been five dollars across the board, whether it was spayed or neutered. And this is just a small step in trying to encourage more people to spay-neuter their animals.
And this is state guidelines?
State guidelines, we can go up to ten dollars, and they put that in there. A lot of municipalities have enacted that difference for that reason, just to encourage people to take advantage. And good timing that we're giving out spay-neuter vouchers to help citizens do that. If we say, okay, we're about to start making this change, but we're also gonna help you with it. Section Two Tech Fifteen, dogs killing injured or chasing livestock or poultry.
And can you just tell what page that's on?
This is page five. Basically, everything that we already add in this is per Virginia code. In the last year or so, the state has added, uh, one little line that I recommend adding in. The judge or animal control can, um, deem the animal to be destroyed for killing livestock. The state has added one little line that says that, um, we can give the owner the opportunity to, uh, remove the animal to a non- neighboring state. And it's just one more opportunity of maybe doing something different. Gives us the latitude to give them the opportunity, if they want to send it to a state that doesn't neighbor Virginia, instead of outright just having to kill it. So it's just following exactly what code recommend, or what the current code says. Two Tech Sixteen, which is page six, dog killing other domestic animals, other than livestock or poultry. And that's, again, that clause giving us that option as far as moving the animal out of the state instead of basically pigeonholing ourselves, that outright has to be euthanized. I believe that there's the opportunity for some of these shelters that we work with in other states that don't neighbor a Commonwealth, where we could possibly move the animal to an area where there isn't livestock, and it gives us one more option. And also, um, we had in the code, uh, Two Tech Sixteen, killing unlicensed dogs. Not sure how far back this goes, but essentially it said that if animal patrol officer was to respond and find a dog with no collar, no tags, they could, um, assume it to be unowned and kill it pretty much right there on the spot. Doesn't go in line with the state's hold times for any animals that are picked up, and just didn't seem to go with all the other initiatives that we're doing, so we've removed that, or we're recommending removal of that.
Take the next change on page fourteen.
At Palmet, we're running as large, Section Two Tech Twenty Four. There's a couple places in the code where it talks about animal control bringing an animal to the shelter and the owner being able to redeem it from us. Basically, we just clarified in the code that the owner has to show proof, they have to show proof of their tags. If for some reason they're not current on the rabies, what we can do is notify animal control, they can release them, and give them a certain amount of days to go to vet and get that taken care of, to make sure that they've got their county tag, their rabies tag. But they need to pay us for, we do an intake exam, vaccinations, and basically minimal boarding costs for the time it was in the shelter. Right now, the policy that we have in place, which we carried over from the previous management, is if someone wants to surrender an animal, we ask for a twenty-five hour surrender fee toward their own point care to offset our expenses. If somebody's redeeming, um, we, twenty-five hours, which is basically all the main vaccinations that we do on intake for the safety of that animal and the others, and ten dollars for each additional day, and that's the care, food, things like that. If for some reason your animal was to be hit by a car, had to get emergency veterinary care, and then you come forward to claim it, we get a discount at that, at the local clinics. We would just ask that person to make arrangements with us to reimburse us for the medical expenses as the county doesn't absorb it. If someone comes to us looking to surrender, and, you know, we've had cases where I lost my house, my house burned down, we're not gonna say, sorry, give me twenty-five dollars, or I'm not taking the dog. We're gonna work with people. We do our best to get that to offset the expense that the county is taking on when we take the animal. And basically, in this section, and I believe it's the next section, it just talks about the reasonable fees that were incurred by the pet center as approved by the board supervisors, that the owner would be responsible. We currently track surrender fees, redemption fees, um, in our shelter software, and that's part of the report that goes to the treasurer's office through finance. So at any given time, it's very easy for us to produce that. If the board had questions about how much are we taking in for this, we could break it down further if we needed to, to say, you know, this many animals will redeem from us after X amount of days. Typically, we don't have any special medical costs outside of the vaccinations and just the basic care, feeding, occasionally some medicine while they're in our care. So, the old code talked about the time that the animal would be held at the shelter, but didn't say anything, or it wasn't clearly stated that if we hold the animal and the owner comes forward to reclaim it, that they would be asked to reimburse us for those costs. In a nutshell.
Do you wanna walk through page seventeen, or do you think I got to sum it up?
And again, it's, page seventeen, it's essentially the same thing. Only difference with, uh, for the section on cats, page seventeen, as you know, we've talked quite a bit about, um, TNR being something that is an alternative that has been proven in other areas to help with the issue. We did add a line, animal control, if they come across a cat and the owner can't produce proof that it's vaccinated, um, animal control has the authority to take the cat, bring it to the shelter, and we would hold it. Now, if you talk to Officer Dillon, she would agree. The alternate, the better alternative is, okay, you can't produce proof, take your cat to Cherrystone, get the rabies, and the rabies up to date, and I'm gonna come back in a couple days, show me proof it's done, and we're maintaining that instead of us taking it in. But this gives them the authority to seize it. If they can't prove that it's been vaccinated, we added a line, community cats displaying the signature ear tip shall be, um, not be impounded in the enforcement of this section. Seeing the signature ear tip, we know that means that they've already been vaccinated, it's spayed and neutered. So unless they're displaying some other signs of concern, they'll need to round those up and bring those in and assume them to be unvaccinated. And again, it just talks about, uh, reasonable fees for the boarding and care of the animal if the owner comes forward to reclaim. And truth be told, we do our best, if somebody comes to us and they want to get their dog back, even though we have a fee schedule, we do our best to work with them because the goal is to get them out of the shelter and back with families. The whole point of these charges is just to help offset the expenses that we're taking on from the citizens. Any questions?
I'd like to, committee members? Any other board members that are present, have any questions? I have a couple. I guess one of these, Mr. Hunt, is a little more legal, sure, documented. Have you read it, what's your thoughts, any opinion?
James and I have worked closely on this in ninety-nine, some of these changes are just to bring our, there's been some recent changes in Virginia code, we're just mentioning Virginia code. And so I have no hard vote about any of these changes.
Comment, not question. I'm assuming this will probably more than likely make it in front of the full board December meeting. I would like to have Ms. Dillon's presence. I think this affects her quite a bit. I'd like to have her input.
She was looped in the process, but I agree, she's.
Yeah, I'd like to have her present, of course. And then the spot where it says reasonable fee, you know, I just feel like that's an open end. I mean, can we come up with fifty dollars?
Well, with the fee schedule that I just basically told you is what we've been, uh, basically doing. What we can do at the back end of this is approve fee schedule, which I've seen in other counties, and just have it spelt out in the back section.
The ten dollar a day, the.
The back section of this, have it spelt out in the very back, so that when it gets approved, it's in black and white, everyone knows what it is. And there's nobody thinking that we're changing it depending on who it is.
I think that would be a very professional way to do it.
The, um, we've talked about this, if you bake it into your ordinance, every time with inflation or whatever it changes, you gotta spend money to advertise public hearing, it takes like three months. So what a better alternative, I believe, which often do what you want to do is, at the re, during the budgeting process and the, we have, we adopt a blanket fee schedule that has everything from building inspection fees to fire investigation fees. What a better alternative would probably be, every year, you could reexamine those fees to make sure, are they too high, are they too low, are we not covering our costs? It's better to change it there so you don't have to spend four to six hundred dollars in three months to change it if you just want to tweak it by five bucks.
And it is a public hearing process that's involved in that, would be.
Yeah.
And you update the fee schedule to that is a public hearing. So you're thinking just adding lines and refer to the fee to.
And it does, and we have lines in here already that says, like, for instance, um, it says, on page seventeen, on Section G, it says, "By paying an apparent fee established annually by the board supervisors and approved fee schedules," you see what I'm saying? So, I didn't know like that reason. We can take that language out, that's a lot of language from the state code. I agree, it kind of leaves it up to interpretation. And I think what it's, what it's telling the public is that the fees that you adopt, you're not gonna single out a certain, you know, you're gonna keep it within the right parameters. But yeah, we can take reasonable out and just say, fee schedule, that's not.
Yeah, we don't have to list it, that's cool, just refer the schedule.
It's the easier way to adjust if we need to adjust.
And what we're seeking as staff, I think there's only two of y'all here, um, we just need a, as you know, in committees, we just need a recommendation to the full board, this would be on the work session in December, and then under matters of board, of management of the work session, on the night, December meeting, you would just authorize us to have a public hearing, probably in the meeting that changes.
I'll entertain, help from committee?
Your recommendation, you put this before the full board?
I'll second that.
Y'all need to vote, you know, the exercise until. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGlaughlin.
And James has worked hard on this, and I commend him, he's, he's doing good things with that show.
I agree, he's doing phenomenal job.
All right, moving on, item B, discussion of potential revisions to solar ordinance regulations.
Mr. Sides is gonna handle this, if you flip into your documents, look at five B and then current, this is, this is what we're really gonna be working off of, five B and current. And Mr. Sides is gonna walk us through this. I'm gonna miss him when he's gone, but Mr. Sides has really, um, worked very hard. He should be commended. We have a solar ordinance that, um, is more advanced than a lot of people in Virginia, and we're trying to get out in front of this issue, and Greg's largely responsible for that. So he's, he's a lot more of an expert than me on this. I want to thank him, and he's gonna lead you in this discussion.
All right, we talked about the regulation of solar development in the county a number of times now. We, uh, as you've all heard the story, the first solar project that came along was brand new to us, and largely new to Virginia, so we had to develop an ordinance as a result of that so that we wouldn't be top class of ours. So we developed the solar ordinance, we tweaked it a few times as we go. We also have policy guidelines that go along with the actual formal ordinance itself. Ms. Hayes, it's in the audience, she and I all can ask me, we're solar developers, and give them advanced knowledge of these are the requirements of our ordinance as well as our policy and guidelines. But in some recent discussions, because we've got a significant number of projects, I think we're up to ten, or in the neighborhood of ten now, that have been permitted and just some that are in process. This body has brought in some concerns about, are we gonna add too much solar, if we be regulating a little bit tighter and stricter? So I think at a past meeting, you all suggested that I look into a little bit more about what other localities would do and what some other suggestions were. So, Ms. Hayes has collected information from some other localities that we have reviewed. And I have been to a number of training seminars involving utility scale solar. And one of the handouts that I got from one of those meetings is a consultant that identifies its localities and makes suggestions on utility scale solar projects. So, in reviewing the ordinances, I see that we're still, I would say, out there in the front as far as what the ordinance includes and the requirements. We still have some people that have taken a stand on including salvage value. And we have taken a pretty hard stand that we don't count salvage value in our definition of mine. But in looking through the information, there is a couple of, few recommendations that some, very few localities have done, but I see probably trending that direction. So that's what we're bringing for you tonight and calling as potential amendments. This is up to, you know, you all to decide if it's a direction you're gonna go in or not. The handout that's in your packet is a suggestion that we can kind of go by one by one. It's largely based on recommendations, in some cases it might be tweaked a little bit for us, but we'll go down the list and have a little discussion if needs be. What we're looking for at the end is, is this something you want to consider adding into our solar? And the first criteria is the maximum size for utility scale energy facility. And I know there's been some concerns about, you know, a large facility being very visible and impacting the seed shed, are we gonna have too many of these types of projects? So one of the recommendations that I've seen out there is setting a maximum size for utility facilities at fifteen hundred acres. And just by way of comparison, the largest one that we've had in Fitzsimian County so far has been approximately twelve hundred acres. And that's in the Maplewood Climax project. So this is, you know, is this, I guess I'll go through these, and then maybe we'll come back and discuss and pick out, you know, put on each particular one. Density of panel coverage of a site area no more than seventy percent. I've seen in one other ordinance where it limits that if you're permitting this particular tract of land, no more than seventy, in some cases sixty-five percent of the land to be covered by the actual collectors themselves. I threw seventy out there on the table. If you are, just for comparison, if you're doing an industrial project in a M-two zoning district, our current ordinance right now requires ten percent of open space. So you can develop it as little, as tightly as ninety percent developed. So this is seventy percent, and looking at some of the projects based on drainage areas and setbacks, and lays of the land, I think most people are in the sixty to sixty-five, no more than seventy range. So I don't see this being a drastic change, but it would, it would limit it from being a problem in the future. Minimum distance from other utility scale solar facilities. Again, there's been some concern of, are we gonna have one after the other and completely saturated there? So some localities have looked into setting a minimum distance between of five miles. So from this solar facility, measure directly to the profiles, plant nearest point to nearest point, that it's at least five miles separation between solar, large scale solar energy facilities. The maximum distance from an existing electrical transmission line, two miles. And there's some bit of a limitation on solar projects in general because they are looking for substations and looking for existing transmission lines. But as the interest in solar increases and as the competition becomes a little bit more intense, I think there's the possibility of reaching out a little bit further from the transmission lines. And I'm not sure that the county wants, um, ten miles of transmission line to get to a solar facility. There may be some impacts associated with that. That's where the two miles limitation came from. The setbacks for the, for the collectors that, again, suggested by a consultant, the setback from an existing residential use of two hundred feet. You know, if there's an adjacent property, the residential is owned, or there's a house on it, then the setback to the collectors from that property would be two hundred feet. And then the setback from any other property land would be a hundred and fifty feet. That is maybe agricultural to another agricultural tract that's owned by somebody else. Maybe they're still armed, maybe they have a trailer on it, something that's not residential use.
And then that's assuming they're not participating in solar project, right?
Correct, that's in reason in Runsees that says excluding interior, excluding interior lab. Because we're still saying, if you own a multi-track solar project, you own both tracks, and you're doing it all in solar, you wouldn't need to do a hundred and fifty foot setback from collector to collector, because that's all part of the internal property lab. So those are suggestions, I think we'll talk about the annual limit question next, but, uh, but just I'm open for feedback on whether we're in the right direction, if these things are too loose, or too tight, or what the general thought is.
Any committee members?
So, the current setbacks, is there any safety concerns with what we currently have that will cause us to increase these setbacks?
Not a safety concern. The approach we took in the original ordinance was that we'll treat solar collective just like any other facility, any other building. So if you come with a building next to a property, setbacks would be the same as if you were building a barn or a banquet, collectors treating the same way. Now, I think some of the supervisors may have got some feedback that, hey, I bought a place in the country, and now there's a solar collector thirty feet from my house. So, again, this is something, if the board feels like you need to be, this, uh, this is a suggestion. But staff is not bringing it to you as a problem we're trying to fix.
The only thing I've gotta say, I, as long as we keep the bond requirements and keep that as strong as we have, I think I'd probably see the use of any of these changes personally.
Any other board members present, have any questions or comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple comments. I, I can support the changes, I think, in all fairness, Mr. Sides, I appreciate all your work on this. But I, I think you and your staff brought forth the right recommendations before, and we're ahead of the game on our current standings. I think we need to remember a couple of things that will control the market some anyway. And one is being next to, having to have be in proximity to transmission lines. So if we start implementing the five mile rule, then, you know, we're almost picking and choosing which landowners we're going to properly support, and I have a problem with that. I always have a problem with kind of a landlord, what do you do with his own property? And I think from an agricultural standpoint, we need to realize that that's what the backbone of the county, but also that has been what has, um, held us up, and these folks need to be able to get this supplemental income in a lot of cases. So, uh, I'm not supportive of any of the changes currently. I think we need to remember too, there is some legislation that's been pending now that would change a little bit of their tax paid treatments. So we certainly don't need to get up in front of that, for sure. I do think we need to continue to stress in every way we can legally that they've gotta be bonded, and it's gotta be, you know, recognized rating system so that the county is protected on the cleanup side. I just would remind the board too, that our move, our first, and the project that seems to be moving forward with the Verdi Hill coincides with a big solar project that that power plant is seeing. So we don't wanna send the wrong message, that we're not in favor of that too. And, uh, I think we have to remember too, that I think we get, maybe get sidetracked sometimes because there is no other county in the state of Virginia that iceifies almost nine hundred and ninety-seven square miles. So for us to say, we got ten projects, that may be a lot for most counties, but when you spread it out over nine hundred and ninety-seven square miles, I'm not, not sure that plays that way. So for that reason, if the committee does decide to send this forward, I would not be supporting it once it got to the full board.
Anyone else?
My only question slash comment, obviously I'm not an expert in this, Mr. Sides, I've met with a few folks and a few developers. What's your opinion on, do, do we require currently, is it called the transmission survey? Where they show the current wattages, and then what this project will add to the line?
We don't require that on a county level, but that is addressed by, if you want to build a solar project, you want to tie into the EGM utility network, then you have to justify and show that the line is support, is able to carry that capacity. And then you have to show that there's a need for that power on that system. So that's well above Fitzsimian County's level.
So it is, it's happening.
No, it's on the state.
Correct, you will not be able to build a solar project. You will not be able to build a solar project if you couldn't connect.
Mr. Warren, can I, can I make one other statement? Mr. Sides, I, I would like to see you and your, your folks really stress and be, you know, emphatic with any of these solar projects, that they do the proper foliage and cover for the exterior surrounding these properties. Because Mr. Davis had a bad experience in that in his district and, you know, they didn't live up to what they said. They, they need to be sure that that's what they care for. So you do protect those citizens that are living nearby that they don't want to let the solar project do that.
Yes, we, we, we definitely learned that experience from that first project and there's no change suggested on that because in our current ordinance, we've already made the change of double rows of trees, four, six feet of planting, uh, we require our vegetation magnet plants or that's a learning area.
Okay. Um, and I just wanted to add the same thing, Mr. Warren. Thank you. You've been on exactly what we asked you to do. But I, I also say I feel like our current ordinance is sufficient. That's what I said.
So at this time, would any motions or recommendations?
Would I recommend anything? Well, yeah, or the motion could be just take no action.
Like you say, this is, is not the staff saying, here's the problem we've got to fix. It's staff responding to you all saying, if we were to change it, what would we do? And these are the things you're suggesting. The current ordinance, uh, you know, has the vegetation requirements that we mentioned. We hand every developer that we meet with solar energy facility guidelines, it has the decommissioned bond requirements and, uh, and we have cash bond option, the letter credit and the surety. But it very clearly states, um, based on your comment recently where we initially set an A rating, um, we now have gone with the AMF credits, uh, schedule of superior rating overall, which is A plus to A plus plus. So our guidelines say that a surety or performance bond is renewed automatically from a company registered and licensed to operate the Commonwealth of Virginia and with a credit rating of superior equivalent from a national recognized rating company and on the U.S. Department of Treasury listing a certified companies, um, payable to the county, et cetera, et cetera. So that's.
And, and Mr. Warren, for your, uh, peace of mind, we reviewed two bonds today, uh, that we are in the process of rejecting, uh, or making them concurrent. One, used salvage value, we said no, and the other one, they had a surety, but they have not proven to us that it meets these criteria. So we've asked for proof that they meet this. So we are, we have nine or 10 projects. We're now seeing the first bonds coming through, so we actually have a meeting with Ms. Hayes and Mr. Sides myself today about two potential bonds.
Robert, as far as the, the other item that, that you all also asked about was, there was, some members have expressed some concern about too many solar, too much solar, so there was talk about a limitation. Well, again, under the theory of if you want a limitation, then what is suggested here as a potential is a percentage limitation. Um, I looked at all of the land in Pennsylvania County that is eligible for solar at this point, which would be A1, Hill 1, or M2. And that's, uh, just under 500,000 acres. And based on what has been permitted thus far, not constructed, but permitted, that's less than 5,000 acres. So at this point, we're looking at less than 1% of the available land for solar has been used by solar projects. So we're still a pretty small percentage number, but if there is a feeling that there needs to be a limitation, or this is something that will be revisited in the future, it was proposed that we set a number like 1%, 1 and 1/2% or whatever per year as, as a limitation. And again, I throw that out for the board's consideration. We favor percentages rather than say no more than 5,000 acres or whatever, but in the planning business, percentages are easily used in terms of, you know, job growth, population loss, whatever, everything's a question of change. So this is not a recommendation by staff, it's just an option.
All right. Can I repeat your motion by second?
Oh, I guess, uh, I just think you might can take no action at this time.
All right, I'll second that.
Do you need a vote?
All of you agree or not? Jimenez? Item C, discussion of 2020 legislative priorities.
I'm going to pinch hit for Mr. Smithman, um, on this. Uh, I spoke to him on the telethon about this today. As everybody, um, breaks out, something that says 5C. Um, county staff has put together, um, when, very shortly, we're going to have to arrange sit downs with our legislatures and legislators and try to develop a 2020 list of some asks from them. Because as you know, right after the holidays, they're going to start working. And we're going to need to have a presence in Richmond. These are just some potential priority lists for 2020, and I'll go through them. Number one, and Richard can maybe speak to this, as you know, we brought this to you many times, Cherrystone and Roanoke Fork dams are, we're, we're being required to rehabilitate them, um, for safety concerns, and that's going to be potentially very expensive. Uh, Richard, the last test we had was approximately $21 million. We don't have that.
65% federal and 35% local.
The feds will play 65% and we are 35% local. Now that is split over three entities, although we're two of the three entities. It's, it's, uh, town of Chatham, Pennsylvania County, and then our soil and water district, which has no funding, that's essentially our stuff. So two third of that delta, that 35%, we're going to be on the hook for. Um, historically, in the recent past, localities have been given, um, have leaned on the legislators and they've put money in the state budget over a series of years that helps to fray some of that cost. We don't think we're going to actually have to start building and spending money until at least four or five years from now. What we're asking for from staff is the board to support us actively lobbying and working for our legislators to get money, start to be allocated for this process. We also know that, um, in the last budget session, we were allocated $100,000 to hire an outside consultant to review the fed's plans because we thought that there's a cheaper and potentially better alternative, it's not going to cost as much money. We've received that money within our fee. We have hired these people at one of your previous meetings, you hired this person. So hopefully that number will go down some, but we're just looking for the board to recognize that this is a need and for us to try to start. I, I, you know, it'd be a lot better to stockpile some money that's allocated for this. They've done that for localities in the past. So that's the number one. Number two, sometimes it's like banging your head against a brick wall. We've asked numerous times, but as you remember, we were, um, imposed a, um, originally it was seven or nine million and we got it down to 2.5 million dollars to be paid over a 10-year period because of, um, we can argue back and forth whether this is Warren or not, because we were the first people who, who blew the whistle on some CPMT and CSA regularities and we were the canary in the coal mine and we got smacked. But we have, and Mrs. Vanderheide was working on this today, we, we have two more years left on this fine, but we really only have one because they took the 2020 payment out in, um, they've already taken that money out in October. So we're talking about 250,000 dollars. What we're asking for is to talk to some legislators about them repurposing that fine and give it to our schools because, um, as you've had a presentation in one of your past meetings, that, the old Chatham Armory is called Victory Academy now, that's been wildly successful. And actually, they're using that as a template to take around the state and let people copy it because we have dramatically reduced our children that have issues that cannot be in regular schooling, they go to this schooling, um, and they don't stay there permanently. The, the issue is get them back on track to rehome back into public schools instead of sending them to out of state and out of county placements, which are beastly expensive. So we're just seeking the ability to discuss what legislators are attempting to repurpose that last 250,000 dollars, don't punish us further. We've already made stress, let them reallocate that to operational expenses for that chat victory. So that's, that's number two. Number three is, um, we always have this on our priority list and it doesn't get anywhere. Maybe it might get some traction this year with what's happening in Richmond. Counties are treated like the redheaded stepchild when it comes to taxation. We don't have the ability to pull different taxing levers at cities and towns. We're just, this is typically, we probably won't lobby that hard on this because this is always on VACO, who has a lot bigger voice than us because it's collection of counties. This is always one of the number one priorities. We just said, treat us, give, let's get everybody a fair playing field, an even playing field. Just let us have the same ability to make a local choice about which taxes we're allowed to. Because under the Dillon rule right now, we have very limited means to gain revenue. Um, so I don't think we'll do a lot of work on that because, because VACOs are toting the world on that. Number four, we just spoke about, uh, uh, solar. I was recently reading an article by Elon Musk and, and, um, Bill Gates, and they said that, um, although they're fully for solar, and I think most, a lot of people are for, fully for solar, they, they were saying that all the, um, tax incentives and the, and fiscal incentives need to go off of solar and move to the next technology because it's just taking root. You always want to incentivize for the next big thing. The problem with us is, and yes, we do gain tax revenue when the land falls out of primarily land use, goes into being taxed on a commercial basis. We are, um, we're taking a lot of questions, a lot of administrative costs, a lot of complaints in some situations locally with solar projects. And in the state code, they've, it's very complicated, but they've essentially said right now that we can only, that 80% of the assessed value of the projects is exempt from taxation. Is that right? So we're only getting 20.
It depends on the size. There are some out there in Pennsylvania County that are 100% exempt.
Right.
And then some of the larger projects over 20 megawatts are still 80% exempt.
So if we want to incentivize solar, you got to allow us to have some skin in the game, which, which gets some tax revenue. And we, we will get tax revenue, um, based on it falling out of land use, and there will be some revenue during the construction process and some minimum jobs. But also, um, we just, I think a lot of localities, I think there's some changes afoot. We just would like, if we're on the front lines with solar, we'd like to benefit a little bit more financially. Number five, and I know Mr. Smithen has sent out stuff in the Friday update with articles. Recently, our neighbors, um, lobbied their legislatures. Under the Dillon rule, um, counties cannot, this is one of these levers that we don't have to pull. They were added to the state code, they're allowed by referendum for them to increase their sales tax by 1% with that 1% funding going exclusively to help with aging infrastructure and construction projects for public schools. We know that we have, one of our greatest commodities and bragging things in our county are our schools. They're hundred ship accredited. People stop me all the time, our schools are knocking out of the park. We think we still have new schools. The problem is, these schools that we just did, they're now getting to be significantly older and we're going to have significant capital costs going forward to renovate them. This from staff's level, um, would be, you pay the sales tax when it's a consumption tax, that 1% would help us to fray, because we're looking at a huge amount of money when we have to fix some of these schools. We don't currently have the ability to do that. From you as an elected official point of view, the only way that this gets allowed, there would have to be a referendum on a ballot and the citizens would either say yea and nay. So we just want to give us the option to have that arrow in our quiver because we, we, we're, we're on the tracks, we can see the train coming, and we need some, we're going to need some significant revenue. The, the amount of money being batted around to do new schools and school renovations are astronomical. They actually, as soon as, very shortly, when you join the board in, in January, we've already, I don't know the numbers, so I don't want to put them in public media, but we've already gotten a capital needs number from the schools and it will make you sit up straight and choke them. Now, six and seven, I talked to Mr. Smithen, these, these were things he put on there based on his dealings with VIR. I think they can be combined into one. What, what VIR has, VIR has asked for, and we've been talking to him about it, we could foresee a, a situation, VIR, as you know, has some significant infrastructure and water problems. And they are an economic engine for this region, although they're not in Pennsylvania County or maybe a smaller portion of this. Mr. Smith, we can see a time, and I spoke to him on something about this, that, that a VIR roof or something was created, and he's looking for support from this board to get some financial flexibility from alternative revenue sources to assist them. And would that be a change, a tax sharing agreement? Would that be a TIF, like a tax increment financing where you, you set a higher tax rate just for VIR and the delta from your normal tax rate to the TIF, that money would go to VIR improvements? We're still a long ways away from this. We're just seeking some guidance about if you want to proceed with that. These are what staff has developed. This is your chance to recommend to the board at the December meeting. You don't really want to have 50 things you're asking for your legislators, you want to distill this down to some, some ask, but just know that come the new year, we're going to need to have our presence. And that might be some board supervisor members, that might be staff members, that might be VACO, that might be our friends in the city, Dambler. We're going to need to have a presence in Richmond and try to make some headway on these because we're living in a great county, a lot of unfunded mandates from the state are coming on top of our heads. We need to try for our citizens to do the best we can to get some assistance with some big ticket items we have. As we know, right around the corner also, we've got the jail fund, we've got our rescue needs, we've got some other big ticket items, and any dollars from the state level can assist us and make our lives and our citizens' lives easier. So I throw this out to the legislative committee and all the board members are here. Is there anything on here you don't agree with? Is there anything on here that you think needs to be added? Is there anything that needs to take a backseat and something else needs to go on the priority list? We are, we, we don't have a lot of ownership of this. We want you to tell us what you see and what your constituents see. What, does anything else need to be on this list? Does anything need to be off this list? This is your time to jump in.
Mr. Sides, you get the first opportunity.
That's pretty good. And I would add two things, though I do think we need to, with our resolution on the Second Amendment protections, I think we need to make sure that's logged as well as, the governor just came out with a request for more refugees status. I, I actually did research. Do we have any ability at our level to shut down a resettlement of refugees by the governor if he decides to bring down 5,000, 10,000 refugees into our, does our locale, do we have the ability to spot that or do we have to rely on the general sentiment?
Well, I sent you some information, still in flux. President Trump just did a recent executive order about local choice and exception of refugees. I don't know where that stands right now. I can get more information.
I think that should be added to the list as well then because I think we need to have that on the, the, the agenda for our legislators or whatever, that they don't blindside us with some contingency. But I, overall, I believe this, we, we have those two things I'd be happy with.
Other board members?
Do you have any other information if you would have, some something related about the, um, it will run, it will run in the law school.
Right. Um, you know, the, the. You know, the, the federal case, what I was reading, there's currently a state court case pending in the Abiquit area, and the gist of that lawsuit is, they're challenging at the state level that not being allowed to mine uranium is equivalent to an administrative taking. And so this is a takings argument. That's still pending. The moratorium is still in place. I personally do not see any success in the takings argument because the case law appears to be well established that if you, if the government administratively makes a decision and leaves you with any value in your land, that it's not, does not rise to the level of a taking, it's unconstitutional. I, most legal scholars believe that case is not going to be successful, but that's all I know. I mean, I have not really been involved in that.
Anyone else? Mr. Sides?
I, I would add to that, Dr. Miller, I'm supposed to talk with counsel tomorrow, and I'm supposed to testify in that case in Wise County. So I'll let you know.
My only two, Mr. Hunt, is I wouldn't mind seeing an increase to the rural rustic program funding. That's for the unpaid roads in the county.
We've had that on the, on the pass.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing that back. My district is, you know, not as important as anyone else's, but it is one of the ones that has probably the most amount of unpaid roads, and I get a lot of requests. Number two question, numerical, does that sort of mean anything?
It, it, it doesn't. I mean, I, I agree with you, I think it's kind of confusing when you're writing, maybe we do bullet points or something, but you're just making a suggestion, a recommendation to the full board. Maybe, maybe it's a beneficial exercise to, to put these in the order of importance. I just know in experience, I've been doing local government work for almost seventeen years. Other places I've been, and when we were first here, when I was first here, we used to have a dinner with our legislators, and what we learned was, don't give them twenty things, give them five good asks if they can work on. So I think we're in a reasonable number, I don't think this is excessive, but we, maybe at upcoming retreat or maybe at upcoming work session, we can talk about it. But I do think we need to have a coordinated attack about having a presence in Richmond because states have never been higher. Everybody's fighting for the same pennies now. And, and the economy's doing well, but it's not always going to do well. And if we could sock away some money, especially this dam study or other schools, it would, it would help us weather some storms that inevitably become.
I would say from, from my experience over the years of growing up, it's pretty important on these issues like the school and the dam, because we're not the only ones facing it, that we coordinate with those folks and speak as a collective voice versus just speaking as one. So the committee may want to consider directing staff to find out who has similar interests to partner with them.
Sounds good. All right. Do we have any motions at this time, or recommendations?
So if essentially we combine six and seven to some kind of VIR support, that, that, that gets us down to Second Amendment, refugees, and increased rural rustic funding, you're, we're not asking for a decision. If you just make that recommendation to the full board, we can flesh this out because I know there's some people missing tonight. We might be able to fine tune this a little bit, we might be able to gather information. Mr. Warren, Mr. Warren makes a good point. If, if you have a lot of people shouting for the same thing, instead of one person, we can be more successful. But I'm just looking for a recommendation that we're on the right path, or the ones that you said to the full board, and we can talk about this at the next level.
A recommendation, please, Mr. Chairman, let's go. What thought for consideration? What? Go ahead.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, but I'll be happy to answer any questions or try to help you.
Absolutely. Do we have any matters from our committee? At this time, I'll adjourn the meeting.